Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we want to have one ceremonial item. Uh, Gels, Vice Mayor Young.
So if Murfreesboro City Council on please this evening to present another Stars Award to a very deserving group of employees from our dispatch and communications operation on second shift. This time I'd like to invite Supervisor Lindsey Callahan and her team back to the podium back here for a short presentation. While this team is on their way, I'd like to read the narrative that was submitted for nomination by Lieutenant Jimmy Puckett. Lieutenant Puckett could not be here this evening, but I know he is especially proud of this group for their accomplishment. And so I'd like to read his narrative. In early May, dispatcher Bree Dunn received a call from a party in Texas stating that a subject who resides in the Murfreesboro area was chatting on a live webcast threatening to commit suicide. The caller was only able to provide the subject's name and approximate age, and the subject was armed and was staying at a local hotel. Dispatcher Dunn was able to query the subject's name through the driver's license file of NCIC and locate a possible address. Dispatcher Dunn then promptly entered a CAD card with the information provided by the complainant. Dispatcher Michelle Roland then dispatched patrol units to the scene. After the units were dispatched, communication staff were able to obtain the name of the website and username. They were then able to access the website and locate the live feed. Staff listened tirelessly to the subject's cry for help. Staff attempted to make contact via chat, but based on the volume of messages from those pleading with the subject, their efforts fell short. Officers arrived on the scene at the only address communication staff was able to obtain, but were unsuccessful in locating the subject. Communication staff never gave up in the attempt to locate the subject. Dispatchers Cassandra Scott, CTA Jessica Christian, and trainee James Ray, with guidance of Supervisor Callahan and Sergeant Hirschman, began calling local hotels in hopes of contacting the subject. This also reached a dead end. Staff made contact again with the original complainant in an attempt to attain any additional information that might give them a better chance to locate the subject. Fortunately, the complainant was able to contact a friend who was able to provide a cellphone number for the subject. CTO Christian began efforts to ping the subject's phone belonging to her, and communication staff had an approximate location. From information provided by the phone company, dispatchers once again began calling hotels in the surrounding area. Dispatcher Tim Juno made contact with the clerk at a local hotel, who was able to confirm that the subject was checked into the hotel. Officers were immediately sent to the location. Communication staff continued to observe the webcast. Supervisor Callahan advised that it was apparent that the subject was becoming extremely lethargic. EMS was notified by dispatcher Roland and advised to stay. Officers confirmed that the subject was at a local hotel and she was located. Communication Supervisor Callahan, dispatchers Cassandra Scott, CTO Jessica Christian, James Ray, Bree Dunn, Tim Juno, and Michelle Roland did an outstanding job and never gave up. If it had not been for their efforts, locating the subject, saving the subject's life would never have been accomplished. This group always takes pride and goes the extra mile. Lieutenant Puckett writes that he is extremely thankful for each of them and the job that they do every day. I'd like to take this time to recognize by our applause their efforts.
I know I speak on behalf of the city council and, you know, too often we're, we always talk about our police officers and our firefighters, and without you, you direct them where they need to go. And so you're of vital importance to not only the city, but the residents of the city, and we thank you for what you do. I know I see Chief Folks here, Deputy Chief Tooms here, Deputy Chief Bowen here, and they've told us numerous times, they echo our comments, so thank you for what you do. Brianna Dunn. Tim Juno. Michelle Roland. Lindsey Callahan. Cassandra Scott. And Chief Folks, Deputy Chief Bowen, if you guys like to come up and get a picture with everyone. All right. You have the consent agenda in front of you.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, you have the minutes of the July 20th special joint meeting regarding the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Eight.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And Channel Three, I forgot, or our city TV had asked me to mention to the council members, including me specifically, to talk into the microphones because they're having trouble hearing us, so that was, I forgot to say that last week. And it was really Ms. Michado who scolded me after the meeting, too, that she couldn't hear, hear.
She's told many of us over the years.
Ms. Michado, just throw something if we're not, if you can't hear us, okay? Okay. All right, second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16028 to amend an area in the Plant Commercial Development, PCD district located along West Northville Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road, 2016-417.
Move for approval.
Second.
I didn't hear that. Who said that?
Move for approval from Rick LaLance.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. First readings, a letter from the City reporter, Finance Director, Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Amendment. Ms. Wright.
Mayor, the first item on this budget amendment is for the purchase of some vehicles that were already approved by council under fiscal year 16, but the vehicles were ordered and not come in in time, so we need to put them under the fiscal year 17 budget. Additionally, for community development, we had omitted some revenue for one of their programs, and this is more housekeeping to get that cleaned up and get it budgeted as well. So I would consider both of these things that are just housekeeping measures.
Okay, so we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16031, amending the 2016-2017 budget first amendment.
So move.
Second. Have a motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We now have a letter from the Assistant City Manager regarding ordinance 16032. Smoothie.
You're moving quickly tonight. Good evening.
Make sure in speaking of the microphone, if you don't mind.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Well, I know you had requested, council had requested to see an ordinance regarding food trucks, and several members of the public, potential operators, and restaurants I know are very interested in this topic as well. We've spent a good amount of time working on an ordinance. I would just quickly want to go over some of the guiding principles that we've used in developing the ordinance so far. Pieces of it we do think still need a little more work, but to date, we know we want the regulations to be concise, easy to read, and hopefully easy to comply with. We think the regulations really need to focus on balancing both the demand that we see and the interest in food trucks, especially in the downtown area. We want to balance that with pedestrian safety, our traffic, our parking demands downtown, and also support our Main Street and our downtown businesses, the brick and mortar businesses that are there. We also, in developing this ordinance, we wanted to have some flexibility as, at the administrative level, where we could amend locations designated areas for food trucks at the administrative level. That way, we could be the most responsive. As needs emerge, as any issues come up, we could respond quickly to those. And then lastly, we really looked at other communities to see what their fees were like, how they were structured, how they dealt with these issues, and we thought it would be best to start with a low fee for the permit, because ideally, we want to encourage people to come to us and seek a permit and follow the process. So we'd like to keep that cost low, but then consider potentially higher fees for anyone that violated the permit. Next, at a high level, I'll tell you, we've identified four circumstances that we see food trucks operating in the city. One is on, the first area would be public property, and we see that in two ways happening in our public parks, and then secondly, in the right-of-way or in city-owned parking lots. The second place we see food trucks is on private property. That already happens today occasionally, but usually under a special event permit. And the third area is special events or what we would call food truck rallies, where the gathering or the coordinated effort of the food trucks is kind of an event in and of itself. People come out for Food Truck Thursdays, Food Truck Fridays, and we may see some interest in those type of events here. Lastly, I would say we did look at, like I said, the application fee, keeping it low. It'd be a $50 fee to start out with for a one-year term. And as I mentioned, and I can really speak in detail if you want, I kind of wanted to just hit the high points first to see where you might want to start a discussion, and then also share with you that there are a lot of items that are remaining for us to develop. For instance, at a staff level, we're still discussing what is the application going to look like, who's going to handle enforcement, and developing resources. We really want to, because this is a brand-new ordinance, we want to have probably a 30-day grace period where we're really just educating the public, out talking to operators, talking with our friends at Main Street and the Downtown Business Association, and educating everyone. And that includes our staff as well, educating us on what the ordinance is and what our intent is behind it. So with that, I'll just open it up for questions. And Craig's available also for questions.
You say you talked to a few people. What kind of feedback did you get?
Well, I know that we have reached out to some operators, and they were concerned mostly about the locations and showed a really strong interest in how we're going to allow food trucks to operate in our city parks.
How so? Like, what do you mean, what kind of interest did they show in that? They were concerned that we were going to let too many or not enough or?
I think they're familiar with us allowing food trucks in special event circumstances. But for instance, there's one truck in particular I know that has an ongoing agreement with the city parks in Smyrna, and so we, we're kind of addressing that. Would we allow just one particular agreement with a food truck to operate on a regular basis? Or are we looking at permitting them just in special events? And one thing that we've discussed is, we have a, Parks staff has identified specific locations in their parks where they know a food truck could operate and it would work, but they're asking that they still follow, follow up and make reservations if they're going to do that, so that staff can look for potential conflicts. So if they've already rented facilities for certain events that may conflict, if they have festivals or events that maybe we're putting on that might conflict, and then also concession agreements and things like that.
Yeah, it's something that just crossed my mind is if they, you know, a lot of times the concession areas are ways that the youth sports leagues make a lot of their money to function, and if they, you know, if we have kind of an unlimited number of food trucks can pull in there and sell stuff, it might really hurt their capability to, to do their business, which we, which could be a little detrimental. Now, it may be in the language in here, but just something I just crossed through my mind there.
I've had some comments for some, some people also about this. Ms. Moody, should, should we have a stakeholders' meeting with this? I know the Planning Commission is very attuned to public meetings in the last few months, and we've let some not happen that we should have happened, and I would want to get all the input I could from our brick and mortar people and, and get their input so that we can have a good ordinance, that everybody's, I don't know if we can please everybody, but that we can make work and make successful, because food trucks are a wonderful phenomenon right now, and I think there's a place for them in our city and in our events, but at the same time, we don't want to infringe on the brick and mortar people. And you made a comment that, that I want to address a second, that you said staff was not completely agreed on everything on this. Maybe we should work on that a little bit before we come back with this. Is that a correct statement? I don't want to speak out of turn, but...
We would be happy to accept more time to work on this, and also more time to do the kind of public meeting and outreach that you're talking about.
And also, are we going to put, throwing this out for consideration, when we have the food trucks in a certain area, are we going to limit so many selling meats, so many cold refreshments, you know, are we going to put a limit on something like that? I just want to throw that out as we discuss.
I, I agree with all the comments that have been made up until this point, and I think it's a little bit premature for us to be voting on this and even asking questions about it, because I think there needs to be a public meeting held between the stakeholders, the, the brick and mortar restaurants, as well as the food trucks. And if we could have that stakeholders' meeting before we consider this again, I think that would be prudent. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we defer until following a stakeholders' meeting.
Second.
Didn't mean to shut you down, but...
No, I appreciate it. We'll see if we can have some samples there as well.
Food truck samples?
We may want to vote on...
You could put two out on this side and two out on this side. I don't know, you may want to let us vote.
We've got a motion and a second. Would we like to vote on this, Ms. Wright?
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Moody, thank you for your work. It's here for approval, certificate of appliance for wine and retail stores. We have RV number 41, 1640, Robert Rose Drive and Sprouts Farmers Market, number 581. Ms. Wright, is everything in order?
Yes, sir, they're in order.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. I think Ms. Gels Harris, was it second?
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Sorry.
Ms. LaLance.
There's three sec, I was trying to, so, all right, Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Fire and Rescue Chief contract with the parent company to service Construction Manager at Risk, CMAR, for Fire Station Number Four relocation.
Mayor, members of council, we are recommending that the council approve the parent company as our Construction Manager at Risk for Fire Station Four project that's going to be moved to Medical Center Parkway. This Construction Manager at Risk, I think the value engineering that will be done by the Construction Manager at Risk and the management of the entire project will be beneficial for the entire project. I know we've already had a huge savings with the Police Department Headquarters and using the Construction Manager at Risk. We received five sealed bids to become the Construction Manager at Risk. We interviewed three firms. After we reviewed all of the proposals that were submitted to us, I decided to interview three firms, did onsite visits for two of the three firms after we narrowed those down from interviews, and decided on the parent company as the committee, as the, the firm of choice for us to go forward with. They have a lot of experience with public safety facilities, especially fire stations, and we think that they'll do the best job of managing this project.
What kind of starting date do you have, chief?
We are working with the Planning Department and the Engineering Department on the site development. There's, there's actually some contingencies in place there that we're waiting on, and we're kind of waiting to see where that plays out before we...
You don't think that holds you up, do you, sir?
No, sir, I do not. And I think if, if it is held up whatsoever, that it will be a major benefit to the city to do so.
Do you know if they're going to make you build the sidewalk first before they build it? That's an insight, that's our...
All I can say is they've been very good to us.
Chief Folks, have you got your landscaping plan approved?
No, we have not yet, but we will.
Okay, and you're photometric also, you know. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we've quickly gone in the ditch. We need to call the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department to pull us out, so, all right. We'll consider recommendations Assistant City Engineer regarding asbestos abatement for the former Franklin Heights housing complex.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, members of council. Before I get into detail on the actual proposal, I would ask, I will yield to Chief Folks to give us some background and set this up for the need for this project, and then he and I'll both be able to answer any questions after I discuss the proposal.
Mayor, members of council, again, as the, as the council is aware, we have actually submitted a letter of intent to purchase Franklin Heights to become our public safety training facility, and we think this is a great reuse of this site, 8.9 acres that will become the public safety training facility. We are currently waiting on HUD approval of the disposition of the property, but while we're waiting on HUD approval for the disposition of the property, we have, we are asking to go ahead and let us abate the property. We've asked, we've sent a letter to Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and of course, this is contingent upon their approval of reimbursement should the sale of the property fall through to the city. The main reason that we're kind of in a hurry to get the abatement done is we have the opportunity to host Firehouse Expo in October of this year. Firehouse Expo is a national conference that's coming to Nashville, and we expect 10,000 to 15,000 firefighters in Nashville during the third week of October. Murfreesboro has been asked by Firehouse Expo to host some of the hands-on training exercises that will take place through the conference. We will be hosting four live training exercises here in Murfreesboro that will result in about 200 firefighters coming to Murfreesboro to train, along with approximately 200 to 250 support staff and instructors. We're very excited to host this opportunity, but to do that, we have to have the asbestos abated from the buildings. We also think that having the abatement done at this time is going to give a lot of leeway for us to be able to immediately begin demolition and get the Training Center site underway more quickly, and we're looking forward to doing this. The Training Center site will help us and the Police Department immensely with our training, but it will also provide a significant enhancement to our ISO points and status with ISO, because one of the requirements of ISO is to have a public sa, or have a fire training facility greater than two acres, dedicated site that we train in a minimum of 18 hours for each firefighter. And so all of those components will come into play as far as having the abatement done in a timely manner, but we especially need it done for the Firehouse Expo that we're scheduled to host in October.
No questions for the chief on that part, and I'll just quickly discuss the proposal. He's, he's set the background up for us, so there is a need for the asbestos abatement. We contacted Griggs Maloney, and they have a asbestos abatement sub working with them. They have given us a proposal for the removal, reporting, sampling, documentation, and certification of the results that are necessary for us to be able to obtain permits to modify or demolish the buildings. The current vision of the police and fire training facility includes the concept that maybe we could reuse five to eight of those buildings, and then the rest would be demolished for, for the open space that we need to convert the facility. The proposal that's attached for your consideration in that is timing materials within not to exceed budget. The base budget is $261,750. There are two contingencies we need in there. Power has been turned off to the facility, so we do not have house power available in there, and so the proposal includes a rental for a generator if we cannot secure another electric power source, and also the proposal includes a contingency for some of the buildings which still have some fixtures in them, toilets and cabinets that will need to be removed to get access to the asbestos-containing materials. If those two allowances are not exercised, there, there'll be no, no payment for those, obviously. So that gives us, us a total proposal of $275,250. We're proposing to pay for this out of the 2016 TML loan, and we're proposing, I'm asking that you would approve our recommendation, subject to the approval of the contract by the Purchasing Director and City Attorney, and also contention upon receiving the reimbursement confirmation from the Murfreesboro Housing Authority. This is a pretty significant expenditure that we, we would not particularly care to do at risk were the purchase of the property to fall through. And it's also something that MHA has anticipated in their disposition of the property as well. So that's a recommendation. We'd be glad to answer any questions, and certainly a lot of staff here that can help with that.
Mr. Huddleston, can you get all this done?